Excuse me, I'm getting close to the call, but I have to get my talking to you. I apologize. I want to turn.
Promise?
Okay. Can you, everyone hear me? Can you hear me? Can I hear you? Mr. Moore?
Mic's on?
Here's it.
Mine is.
Check one, two.
I'd like to call to order the charge of township roster board of trustees regularly today Wednesday, July 10th, 2019. It is now 6:31. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, please excuse the kid in my mouth. Please note the role.
Noted.
Under the rule of these events, I'd like to request that we make presentation number seven, make it seven A, and have presentation, presentation for fine-up Orient Township Supervisor set in B, and change eleven E to Communications and Grants Manager.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda for tonight's meeting.
I want to take off item eleven C as well.
I'll amend my motion to take off eleven C also.
Second.
The rule, and second, all favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
Let's move on to the rule of the consent agenda. Any questions for the consent agenda? If not?
I'll make a motion to put the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Farrar?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn? Yes. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Your public comment, please come up, state your name.
Hi, my name's Margaret Culver. I live in Oxford Township on Delano Road, and I found it very troubling that Oxford Township supports subdivisions of group homes being built. I was told by the city planner, not only do you support subdivisions of group homes being built in the agricultural area, but you would also support subdivisions of group homes being built in Waterstone or anywhere else in Oxford Township. I had requested that if the board did not support subdivisions being put in of group homes, that they write a letter to the state of Michigan, the congressmen and the senators, asking that, you know, that they support one group home being built. That's fine, but subdivisions of group homes are very difficult and an unreasonable burden to the community around it, whether it be in Waterstone, or in an agricultural area, or in, you know, across the street here. It's a very, very undue burden for communities surrounding these group homes to bear. I understand that the particular group home that I'm concerned with will be dealing with people up to and receiving reimbursement for people up to the age of 26. And I understand also that these people are people who have difficulty and are not, they're either behaviorally or physically challenged, they cannot be fostered out. So that burden is even, even more. Not only are we talking about in that particular site, we're not talking about group homes, we're talking about group institutional homes where no resident is going to be living at the home. Those are all going to be employee-driven. So we're not, you know, we're not even talking about a husband and wife being there having foster kids, we're talking about a totally commercial employee setup. Now, we've lived with a group home on North Oxford Road for over 30 years. We have no problem with one group home. And if that site on Barber Road wants to stay as one group home, so be it. I think that the people who live in Oxford Township should know that you all support subdivisions of group homes being built. So I don't think the residents in our township support that. Thank you.
You want to? Mr. Moore? I don't see our auditor here. I guess you're left, Mr. Southern with Oxford Supervisor.
Hello, we're on the second meeting. Hello, I'm.
He's sharpening his knife.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Welcome Supervisor.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm Chris Burnout, Orient Township Supervisor. Two five two five Jozlin is my work address. I mostly live there, but my home address is nine sixty-one Loretto. So I'm here tonight to, it looks like to, talk a little bit about an item that's on your pending business. Supervisor Dunn invited me tonight to address your board. It's nice to see you all, and grateful for the good working relationship that we have, Bill and I have, and that we have with your board as neighbors. Jack and Bill and I got to have a nice meeting with the Road Commission and MDOT this morning to talk about our really exciting new project coming next year. But tonight I'm here to talk to you a little bit about a position that we created in the township, Orient Township, last year. There's a lot of great organizations that exist to help in our roles. I've been in my role for seven years. It feels like it's been about seven months. It goes by so fast. But one of the organizations that's been really helpful to me is the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors. There's 21 townships in the county. We get together for lunch once a month, and it's a really good opportunity to share ideas, talk about best practices, where are we winning, where are we losing, how can we help each other, because we're obviously facing similar challenges and issues. And so instead of all reinventing their wheel, we can kind of take best ideas from each other and learn from each other. So one of the things that we've talked about, and I've talked a little bit about recently with that group, is the, we created a position a year ago called, the title of the position could be whatever you want it to be called, what we call it is Chief Assistant to the Supervisor. So I've mentioned this to my colleagues at our Monday lunches, and I think the reason that's gained some interest from, from them is because of the great success that it's brought to our township. And I did wear, hey, Bill, just for the record, I have my dragon socks on. I know you're, I know you're dragging at heart. So anyway, and so Bill, you know, other supervisors in the county have asked me to kind of talk about this a little bit. Bill invited me tonight. We created the position because frankly, I, like I said, I've been in this role for seven years. I don't know if I've worked less than 60 hours in any of those weeks, and I still have done a fraction of what I thought I'd get done in the first term I was elected. One of the things that we saw a lot of opportunities in grants, there's lots of grants that exist out there. I thought I would have the opportunity to be actually personally working on these grants, and I just haven't had the time, because as Bill can attest and the other colleagues that get together that run, you know, that have these jobs, you know, you don't have a lot of spare time. There's a lot of projects and a lot of things that happen. So I prepared for you, this is a smart sheet, actually, this is one of the projects that this person in, in my township, did you guys all get one of these?
Yep.
The person that holds this position in Orient Township, her name is Sam Timko. This is one of the efficient she's, efficient, she's, geez, I can't speak, efficiencies that she has helped bring to our, our organization. And it's, it's a tracking tool for all kinds of different things. All the projects we have going on in the township have a smart sheet. But this one is, are the grants that she has assisted us, that, so I can tell you unequivocally, the township of Orient would not have received these grants if it not, had not been for Sam Timko and her assistance on bringing these to our attention, and actually writing the grants, following up with the grants, bringing them to our board. So what you see here in the last two years are $2.79 million in grants that we have actually received. We just today, like an hour ago, found out we received another $65,000 grant for a playground on Baldwin Road, a pocket park we're building. So it's called a Friendly Dragon, it's a cool play structure for kids. Another $65,000 that's not noted here. And then you can see there are two grants that we have not received yet, but we have been told we will probably be receiving. One was written by the fire chief with the assistance of my chief assistant, and that's for a FEMA SAFER grant, which some of you are probably familiar with. And then the other one is a recycling, curbside recycling carts. We actually can give credit for all of our residents. I know you guys are experiencing some challenges with garbage as we are as well. If those come through, we'll be over $4 million in grants in the last two years. That's not a fake number. Our general fund budget is about $6 million. I'm assuming yours is probably a little less than that, but not far off of that. So when we are able to write grants for 60% of our annual budget in the last two years is pretty remarkable. So these are grants that are available. I'm really active in SEMCOG, a lot of these come through SEMCOG. Lot of good intentions that I have had, and I wish I could have been doing this for seven years, I kind of regret that I haven't. So when I brought the position to my board, I basically said, let's, let's give it a shot. I think that you might have, I sent you the job descriptions, I brought a couple copies if you, yeah. And the way that the job was kind of presented to my board was, I'm not going anywhere, I'm not planning on working 15 hours a week, I plan on continuing to put forth the same effort I put forward, but I've just, we're just missing opportunities and we need help with all the development we have going on. So I kind of tiered it in three priorities. First was grant writing, finding and chasing these grants and following up with them, which is generally, could be a full-time job, but as you can see, for us, it's paid off. The second was economic development, we have quite a bit of economic development, we have a corridor improvement authority, which is Brown Road and Baldwin Road. So she's responsible to really kind of be the point on that. And then the third was kind of serving in my absence. So when I'm not necessarily even out of town, but if I'm booked at a meeting at the Road Commission with these, you know, this morning, and there's another place, we can't be, be the same place at the same time. So it's been very helpful to me, it's been very, my township board is obviously over the moon, because we delivered on the promise that, hey, I kind of asked them to take a little bit of a risk, because it was creating a brand-new full-time position with benefits, which we know can be expensive. In Orient, we pay the position $65,000 plus benefits, but it has certainly paid off for us. So just wanted to, I don't know if I covered everything you wanted me to cover, but I would just encourage you that there are lots and lots of grant opportunities. I know what your staffing model is like here. We have about 85 full-time employees, you guys are way less than that. You have nine. Eighty-five includes our full-time firefighters, but, and we consider ourselves pretty lean. You guys are really lean. So I would just tell you that this might be a great opportunity for you. I'm not going to say much more, except I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody, anyone had any. Yes, Margaret?
I have to be called?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you also have a deputy supervisor?
I do.
So you have a deputy and the grant writer?
Right, and, and at some point, I would, I think that this position, Chief Assistant, probably would become the deputy. Currently, my deputy is Jeff Stout, he's the Department of Public Services Director. He was in a similar role before.
Okay.
So he still signs things if I don't sign things, but it's different.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Our deputy is a building official, or building department, so.
Right, and, and that, as you know, deputy clerk and treasurer, I think are required to have deputies. Supervisors, it's optional.
Right.
By statute.
Yes.
We have opted to have that, just, you know, I was in Hawaii at a conference a couple weeks ago. Mostly pleasure, but I was there for it, it was some conference, and the township didn't pay for it. But, but you know, there's documents that need to be signed and things like that, the deputy would still have the authority under the statute as the deputy to sign on my, on the township's behalf. But it really is, I mean, the title Chief Assistant, we borrowed that title and we almost modeled the position from Rochester Hills as a similar position. My brother's the mayor there. And all good ideas are generally stolen ideas, so we, we took the same basically job description and model, and because I saw what they were doing in Rochester Hills, literally generating millions of dollars every year in grants, I generally borrowed the idea, which I'm encouraging other colleagues and township supervisors to consider doing the same thing. I don't get anything from this. Matter of fact, it's funny, on the way here, I was thinking, it actually might hurt us a little bit, because we'll have a little more competition for these grants, but, you know, we're neighbors, and if, if there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there that we all miss, and it's not bad, it's not because people don't work hard, it's because there's a lot to do when you're the township supervisor, and you wear a lot of different hats, so, yeah.
Well, we appreciate you taking your time.
Chris, we've already gotten a lot of these grants that you've done, the way we do, we spread it out. Ron Davis has got most of these parks grants. The fire department's gotten all these SAFER grants. See, where, you guys are centralized. Like, do you have a super fire millage?
We do.
See, we do too, but they pretty much take care of their grants, they've been outstanding at it. Ron's gotten us millions and millions of dollars of grants. He takes care of his administratively, we take care of ours. So we've done the same thing you've done, it's just not been under grant writing.
Right. And, and I would tell you, like, for example, the, the recycling grants are really unique. I mean, I, I never knew about that. That's, there's almost $600,000 that we have been told we will get. That's money that goes right to our residents, that reduces our price with our garbage hauler, because it goes towards the purchase of the recycling carts that would eat, they would already be paying for, and we're moving.
For a single haul.
Right, and you could use it for other things. But I understand, I understand your point, and I'll tell you, you know, four million, I'd put our record up against any municipality, probably in the state, you know, over the last two years to get about $4 million in grants, is, is pretty awesome, so. But that's a good point, Joe.
Your grant writer, how did, what did they have researched, Google moguls, or whatever modems to pull all this information in? I'll give you an example. Right now, Facebook is lit up with a $200 million grant opportunity that no one knew about for wifi in rural areas. You know, a lot of our rural areas are agribusiness and agriculture, and they want wifi, but yet Spectrum Charter won't go out there, AT&amp;T won't go out there, it's, it's, we missed that opportunity, and how we learned about it was Facebook. So no one came from those areas and said, hey, did you apply for a grant? Or we don't have a button that turns on every time a grant does. Does your grant writer do that?
Yeah, so she, she's a researcher. I, I can only sit behind the computer myself for about an hour at a time, I gotta get up and walk around this township hall, or, or do something, but she loves to just research. And that's a huge part of it, you just have to be looking. I mean, there's, there are literally hundreds of grants that exist, and there's some grants that we applied for. Matter of fact, our half a million dollar playground grant at Camp Agawam, we didn't even meet the requirements of the grant. Because our, because we were, per the requirements of the grant, effectively too affluent, our, our median income was too high, but because no one else applied, we got the grant. So there's a lot of that out there, which might irritate some people in the room, but that was private funding, that's Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, he's got more, they have more money to give away than they, they're gaining more interest than they can give away the money, and they have a timeline when they have to give all the money away.
They have $1.7 billion.
Right. We just got $65,000 this afternoon, that was that new grant. So the other thing I'd say is, the other option is you can find people that are like freelance grant writers, that will work for a percentage of the grants. In our case, it would cost us more than what we're paying, and I would just tell you that Sam, this is probably 30 or 40% of her job. She helps with a lot of other things in my office, in the township hall, the smart sheets idea, we have a lot of things and a lot of people that have different personalities, and this really brought a lot of organization to our, to our team. So there's other things she works on besides just writing grants. The corridor improvement authority is, is its own tax capture, it's like a DDA, basically. We have zero full-time staff, she works on a little bit part-time. We're, we're generating about $12 million in tax capture. So she wears other hats, and that's the benefit of having the position full-time, is it's not only grant writing. And if we did pay, some of these grants are a small percentage, some are a higher percentage, you have less control, because it's not an employee, and then you're, you generally are, would, would pay more than if you have. So my, my team's really excited about it. I think most of you know how to get ahold of me if you have other questions after tonight, or anything else right now, but I'm happy to, to.
Hands are down there. I'll be back still.
He could.
No, I didn't have my hand up.
Was other staff offered this position? Did you internally look for other people capable of doing?
Yeah, we posted the position like we do all our positions, and we had no internal candidates apply. It was a new position, so we have that a lot too, where if we post a position, someone internally will apply, and then we kind of backfill that. But it was, we created a brand-new position, but we didn't have any external candidates apply. We actually had, I want to say, we had about 40 applicants, and who we hired, she worked for the city of Fort Lauderdale, she was moving back up here to be closer to her family. We had a lot, I joke with people, and I'm, I'm okay with joking, but she's more educated than me, and she's got a master's in public administration, she's got a great pedigree, and she's designed for this job. But we had four candidates that were, that we interviewed, that were all what I would call rock stars. We had an attorney that wanted, wanted to apply for the job. So I think you'll, it, it depends on what you, what you're willing to pay. My board obviously was willing to, to pay decent, because in my, you know, the way I presented is, you sort of get what you pay for. We wanted to try to attract a higher quality candidate, which we did, so.
How many, who was doing the grant writing before?
A hodgepodge of me, our engineer, depending on the tap grant stuff, real, really like a hodge, just whoever could. My admin, I still, I have an admin. But we weren't real, we weren't real great, we still were, we're getting probably more grants than our neighbors were, but nothing like we have in the last couple years, when we have someone that's really dedicated on kind of chasing it.
Chris, does she do something like this too, that you guys?
Yeah, so that was a project that I kind of dreamt about six years ago, and said, why don't we do one good quality community publication? Because all those organizations listed on the bottom, our chamber, our downtown, our village, our library, our schools, the township, we were all doing our own publications that we're mailing to 14,000 households quarterly. So yeah, that was another one of her projects where we brought kind of all those groups together and cast a vision, and that took a year to get it finally everybody on the same page, and that was our first issue, and we had.
Did you sell the ads and all that?
Uh, no, I mean.
Did I see there's ads?
It's handled in our office. Our admin kind of assists with that, with, with the ad sales. And if you look, there's only, we only, I think, sold three ads in the first magazine. Interestingly, we're paying less for that high-quality magazine that people actually leave on their coffee table for the full quarter, than we paid for the web-printed, you know, looking like a newspaper thing that most people took right from the mailbox to the recycle bin, because we have, we're splitting the cost five ways between the chamber, the library, the downtown development authority, the township, and the school. So that was a project that she was involved in. Again, so it's not, our, our, you can, you know, I don't know what, I see your title as grant writer, but we didn't, I didn't want it to just be called that, because I didn't want a shoe, shoebox in, or, you know, shoehorn in this person, they can only do this one thing. So it's really, I, we joke a lot in our office, because everyone in their head, job description has other duties as assigned, as the last line, and there's a lot of other duties as assigned that happen in these township positions, as you all know, so.
That's a beautiful thing, but see, I struggle with it, because we have a local print media in the community that does us for a living.
We went out.
Has for a living. I feel like when government does it, it takes jobs away from people in our community.
Yeah, so, so it's not a newspaper. I mean, we have the same person that you're referencing, we went out for RFP, we, they did not bid to, to print it, but they knew, we, we were very upfront, and let them know that we were, we're not trying to compete with them, I'm a big supporter of the Lake Review, we have a great relationship. This is not a newspaper, that's not a newspaper. We were all sending, that replaces five publications that everyone was getting that were mediocre, now there's one quality, what we think quality, but we've gotten a lot of great feedback publication that replaces those five, it doesn't replace the leader or the review. We still advertise in those, we still.
So you gave them an opportunity to do that work for you?
We went out for an RFP for the design of the, because we didn't do that in-house. We, we actually hired a local person that did design it, that was the best bidder, which was, which was positive. We had people from Colorado respond to the RFP. And then we went out to bid for the printing, and that's, I honestly couldn't tell you who's doing it, but it's obviously not a web-printed thing, and, and the Chairman Publications doesn't do the printing anyway, so.
I'm going to cut you short.
Okay, I'm happy to be cut short.
When's she been gone?
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate you taking.
Come visit, we're living as a vacation.
This is your first time there in a while.
Love to have you. It is, I'm shy normally, so, thanks.
Raina, are you shy? Come on up. Put it out of order, some shoes.
I'm here for a proposal to, I nominate Mr. Dunn to run MDOT for us, because we wouldn't have these issues if you were in charge of it.
Wait till next year, you're lucky even more.
Yeah, we're going to do I-75 at the same time that we're going to do OpDyke. Yeah, okay.
That's a whole other issue.
I'm here tonight to speak to you. My name is Raina Emmons, I'm a partner with PSLZ. My pleasure to be here this evening, and finally get here, and give you a very good financial report for the township's fiscal year ended December 31st, 2018, so your calendar year 2018 report. The, we'll start out with the general fund. Also, the, the township did receive the highest level audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion. You had no disclaimers, exceptions, anything like that, so in layman's terms, a clean audit opinion. So we'll get that right off the bat. Focusing in on the general fund, the, we used up a little of the general fund fund balance this year. $186,000 was used up this year, and that was planned. You've still had some engineering and things to do from the project from the year before, but you did see a property tax increase, not from an increased millage, but from taxable values increasing, and that was 3.3% this year, which you should be very happy with. That's a, you know, that, that's a pretty strong, you know, that really speaks to the value, your property values here. State shared revenue also increased about 3.5%, and the state wasn't anticipating that, but, you know, that results dollar-wise about $50,000 more this year than the prior year in state shared revenue. They, the state kept saying it was going to be flat, the sales and income taxes coming in weren't up, you know, where they thought they'd be, but we ended up okay at the end. Also, up this year, interest income. Treasurer Farrar is seeking all allowable investment opportunities. We're also, this year, total interest was about $165,000 as compared to $116,000 the year before, so there's $49,000. Not a grant writer, but he's doing his part certainly on that. And this, so expenses in the general fund, pretty much on par with the prior year, as far as your operating expenses go. Election expense was up slightly this year in 2018 over 17, you had a gubernatorial election in 2018, so that's why that was up. Also, you still had significant engineering costs from Elkview in 2018, that was about $285,000 this year. So that, that's really the significant increase, not over the prior year, but in, in your operating costs, that you wouldn't otherwise have. Also, the general fund transferred out $300,000 to the Parks and Rec Fund this year, you did substantial improvements with the community center, and also the general fund transferred out $212,000 for the township's continued support of funding the pension plan for the fire department, which is a great move. The, that is the first year you've done that, you've done that for a couple of years now, and hopefully, you know, that will be in your plans going forward, for as long as you can do it. You are gaining on things, so that, we'll talk about that in just a minute. The. The, um, so that's the general fund. Fire department, um, operating expenses were just up slightly, mostly due to, um, uh, wages and, uh, health, their healthcare costs went up. Um, and, you know, wages have to do with runs and, you know, things like that that you really don't have control over, so. Um, also, recorded in that, in the fire department fund is that two hundred and twelve thousand dollar extra contribution numbers that the general fund transferred over to the fire fund and we ultimately recorded that to show that the fire department is paying that. Park bond construction fund this year, in 2016 is when you issued the bond for, uh, the two million dollar bond for the park construction projects. You're left with seven hundred and four thousand dollars as of, uh, 12/31/18, still left to spend on that. Um, you know, Mr. Davis has been very judicious with, uh, he's using a lot of in-house labor and things like that, that's really keeping your costs down. So that's, you know, it's really, it's terrific that you still have that much and you're, you're, you'll end, I don't, I didn't look at how much we've used up so far in 2019, but I suspect most of that is probably getting.
Yeah, good chunks are to be used.
Yeah, because I think they were finishing up the project first quarter nineteen was a lot of that. Uh, water and sewer fund, um, you did receive less in tap fees this year, about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand less than the year before, uh, but still substantial. Uh, you had seven hundred and fourteen thousand in both water and sewer combined, uh, tap fees this year. So you do have, you do have still some strong development here. Um, you know, it's just something you don't want to count on, um, as far as funding the water and sewer funds going forward. You know, we, uh, we certainly appreciate that ex, the extra contributions, uh, from the development, but it's not going to go forever. Um, and, uh, yeah, there, so that, that's about, yeah, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand less than the year before, and that. Jumping over to the, um, oh, you did remain cash flow positive in both the water and sewer funds, so that, that is important to, uh, definitely a cash flow activities. Um, I know Mr. Wright always keeps a pretty close eye on things and Mr. Curtis is involved as well. Um, you're really monitoring your water and sewer funds because that can, those are big dollars coming in and out and a lot of them are increases coming from the county, which you don't have control over, so you try and monitor that to make sure you've got, you know, it's, it's, cash flow's okay, rates are good, uh, that everything's working okay. You don't want to, you don't want to get behind that. Uh, defined benefit plans of the fire pension plan, um, you actually had a net decrease in the pension li, net pension liability, which is a, is a positive thing. Um, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, you dropped your net pension liability over the year before. Now, keep in mind the actuarial valuation in this audit is, is a year back, so it's actually the 2017 actuarial valuation that we reported in 2018. But with that, um, we're showing four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar net investment income on the pension plan, just in your pension plan, uh, in that time period. So that, that's what helped to really drop your, that pension liability, uh, in the year we're reporting here. The, uh, so the current net pension liability is one point eight seven million. So that's total, total pension liability minus the assets you have set aside, that's, that's the net of, of those two. This year, uh, Gatsby, the new Gatsby pronouncement that came into effect this year that, on 2018, is the, um, other post-retirement healthcare liability, um, which our acronym is OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Fortunately, the, the township does not have many people on that plan, you, though the people that are receiving benefits are grandfathered, you don't have any new employees, uh, that are eligible for that, so that's basically a capped, um, item with, but the, but we had to start reporting that this year, just like we're doing the pension plan. So there's a couple of extra charts, extra pages of the footnotes, and what that all boils down to is, um, a net OPEB liability of five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So that's the total liability minus the few assets you have set aside for that, comes out to five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And that, your actuary used some pretty aggressive rates, so that's, you know, I, I'd say that's a pretty generous liability they're giving you there. Um, and I guess the, the last most important thing that I'd want to leave with you is, if you're, if you're able to, in your budget, send extra money to make contributions toward pension and the OPEB, I wouldn't worry so much about your OPEB, I'd concentrate on the pension. You've done a great job with that. The, you know, just to be clear with any, with the residents, that the township has always contributed a hundred percent of what the actuaries immerse tells you, you have to contribute. You've always done a hundred percent. So you're doing more than a hundred percent right now, the last couple of years, and that's really helping the bottom line there. And that's really the only way to get ahead of it. Um, and you know, it's, it's moving the needle, it's definitely moving the needle. So any, you know, even if you could do that for another year or two, that would be terrific. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address anything.
You know, Jim, all this couldn't happen unless good, good things are said about the township, especially mentioned along with the women in the office, uh, lady most of the week, and we, for twenty years, I've been here, you do a great job, you do a lot of it, come out and, and, I really should, but, so, please, Joe, and Curtis, please pass out a line to the people wanting the same thing.
Seeing as I have to audit their work, I concur with that. No, so you know, you know I say that very sincerely, that, um, the audit doesn't happen without, I mean, they, what, what they do and with your leadership on a day-to-day basis, this is how we get to a, a great result here at the end of the year. And it's not a, you know, they keep tacking all this other stuff on. Of course, it's very important and they want you to be forward-thinking and looking down the road and not have your, you know, head in the sand. Certainly, this board has never been like that. Um, but they're, add all these other things on, you know, so on top of the normal, what used to be the normal audit, we have everything else and, you know, they've done a great job, uh, providing everything and, um, you know, because they do a great job every day, that makes the end result at the end of the year, are what I like to call our no surprises approach. You all know by the end of the year how you're ending and I'm not here to come here with a surprise telling you, oh, we, we didn't know about this. So that, to me, is the, is the win-win situation.
If there's no other questions, thank you for making the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Make a motion. I move to receive and file the Charter Township of Oxford Audit Financial Report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018 as presented.
Support?
Move in support. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Please, Jim. Second reading, uh, second reading of the zoning, zoning warrant, sixty-seven, eight, uh, section two of the official, uh, third question from the board.
I move to adopt the amendment to Article Three, Section Two, the Charter Township of Oxford Zoning Warrant, sixty-seven, eight, as presented.
Support.
Move, move in support. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Evening, Board. Last meeting, I was before you and gave a brief, um, highlight introduction of the 2020 road project. Um, I gave you notice of my progress with the village of getting Dayton Street open and at that time, I was referred by the township to go to Oakland County Road Commission to get their side of it approved. Um, today, Supervisor Dunn, Trustee Curtis, myself, we're at the meeting along with Village Manager Mador and all the other people from Orion and everybody else trying to coordinate the project next year of Baldwin Road and M24 going out at the exact same time. We were fortunate enough to have the right people in a room to ask them about the Dayton Street project and their recommendation to us is because we actually have to apply for a permit and go through that process to open the road. And with that, they're requesting obviously a, a drawing to go along showing what we're trying to do for roughly a four-foot by twelve-foot piece of property. And with that, they're asking for a letter of support be included with that package from the township board, showing support for the project going forward. So that's what I am requesting tonight. If you can go ahead and put that on your thought process to take care of that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
I think the motion that the, uh, Board, uh, who I supervise the woman Dunn, to send the letter down to, uh, the village portion, we're finding, giving our blessing for this closing for, that's saving the life of the.
Support?
Move in support.
Be close to it.
Opening.
Opening of Dayton on our side. We can't do it on our own, the county's the only one to be permitted to do it. All we're doing is saying, you know, saying, we're, we're supporting the, that's saving it. The village is already.
You, I think your motion said you blessed the closing of the street?
I didn't mean the closing, I don't.
Opening.
I think what Bill meant to say is to authorize Supervisor Dunn to send a letter to the Oakland County Road, Road Commission of Oakland County stating that the township board trustees opposed the opening of Dayton Street for the M24 construction project.
Re-support.
I would, you are mine. Everybody understand?
Yes.
Curtis. So you withdraw your motion and Trustee Curtis draws his.
I put mine in and Jack supported that one.
Right. You make the motion and Trustee Curtis, three seconds.
Thank you, Jack. Somebody understand?
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. At the same time, while I was there, I also, um, advised MDOT as well as AECom, the engineering company, that the village was looking for and needing a letter from them stating the fact that once the project is over that they would be responsible, meaning MDOT, to return it to its original condition, putting back the guardrail, planting a tree if so needed, removing signs or adding signs to it. And they said that that is all included in their scope of work bid project that's, that's coming out, so that is to be part of the project. So, thank you very much.
The reason, the reason we were down at this meeting was the Orion Township was trying to get our portion put off for another year, uh, because of the work that they're doing on.
Baldwin Road.
We went down, even during this construction, there's two lanes open on Baldwin in the entire town.
Yes.
That's what it was before. So we went down there and, you know, Jack Curtis did a great job explaining our position and I asked them, front line, does this mean, I want you to talk, what, the job come up?
It went quite lively back-and-forth discussion between North Oxford and South Oxford, back-and-forth on the project. And their concern is they were trying to, you know, because of all the extended period of time of construction and overruns that their project is taking, they requested MDOT to push it back. MDOT pretty much said if we do that we change or take the chance of escalating costs and/or possibly funding even being pulled back from and removed from, from the state for the MDOT project. Uh, we expressed our concern over, you know, if that happens, then what gets cut on our side of it as far as going forward? So we expressed our concern and our, um, desire that we wanted the project to go forward. Um, again, it went back and forth as far as parts of the project, if they could cut it out or not do it or delay it. And again, from our side of it to them, and MDOT is agreeing to the point that the entire project will move forward as needed and they gave Supervisor Dunn a direct answer that yes, the project is still full steam ahead going forward. So, good job, everybody.
Any other questions for the fire department? Do it? Anything? Done? You want? Finished business, or done? So, on the new business, Woods of Tullamore subdivision, cash and lieu. Joe, I want you to talk to the chief of safety path.
This is a tough one. Unless you're involved in this situation, basically what happened is, is the water fund and the safety path fund come to a compromise. The safety path fund, uh, had a certain amount that needed to be contributed in order to make it work, to get the cash in lieu. The developer was going to contribute seventy-five, six, but then they left a, a, a small portion, the portion wasn't going to be covered, which benefits the water fund because then through the water line, it can be placed in the property of Tullamore, first have to go around the whole subdivision, costing more, more money for the water fund. Based the way to an internal transfer to keep both projects going and keep both funds satisfied. Jack, you can add to that if you'd like.
By ordinance, we take the engineer's estimate for building a safety path. By ordinance, Jim estimates the cost is going to be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The developer could put it in for seventy-five thousand, six hundred using their tow, tools and time. Uh, the reason they didn't put it in was because of the same wetlands that we would have had to cross or go through with the water main. Uh, the water main is now going through the subdivision and working together with the developer, the safety path, the water committee and the, and the township board, um, we split these costs out to show where, where the encumbrance should be born.
Thanks, Jim. I'll make a motion that Charter Township of Oxford accept the developer's contribution of seventy-five thousand, six hundred as payment of constructing the safety path for the Woods of Tullamore subdivision. At sixty-four thousand, six seventy, we transfer from the water fund to the safety path fund to match the engineer's one hundred and forty thousand, two seventy estimate to complete the safety path. Further, Supervisor William Dunn has authorized a signed safety path cash and lieu agreement amount of seventy-five thousand, six hundred to the Charter Township of Oxford and the Woods of Tullamore. Also, the developer will construct a sixteen-inch water main for a portion of the Woods of Tullamore subdivision, with the Charter Township of Oxford paying the cost increase for installation of sixteen-inch water main from an eight-inch water main.
Support?
Move in support, Jack. Safety path committee, I totally agree with this.
No.
We're not told to, but we, majority.
Majority agreed.
Majority agreed.
I just wanted to go, what's up?
Nope.
The work, the, the.
Yeah, the discussion I wasn't, uh, part of was the agreement to do that and when we got back, we talked about it and worked it through and a majority vote recommended this.
Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Go on to Hubbard Spring, safety path and lieu.
This is Boardman eighty-zero-one. This is just a contribution that they're going to make, lieu-putting a safety path in front of their development. I'll make a motion that the Oxford Township Board trustees waive its engineering design standards to six point, seven point six eight. Hold on, I'm going to roll one. Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
It's on the screen.
Charter Township of Oxford trustees authorize Supervisor William Dunn to sign the safety path cash and lieu agreement amount of five thousand, two forty, to the Charter Township of Oxford and MD Hubbard Spring as presented.
Support?
Move in support. This also in turn, you said?
Yep, and everybody was in favor.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
The delivery dropped, safety path discussion.
Yep, I'd love to see you, that's my drop.
So, we'll move on to the 2019 water main, Roger. We've got four teams now. Who wants to start with?
Well, uh, I guess I can. We, uh, had the bid opening and, uh, it was determined that, uh, BV Stante, Stante Excavating was the lower bid to, uh, put in the water main from, um, the backside of the middle school down to Drainer Road to the entranceway of, uh, the Woods of Tullamore. The cost is five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents and that was within the budget that we talked about all along and the water, uh, fund would be paying for this.
Any questions?
If I may?
Yes.
I move to award 2019 water main project to San, Sante Excavating in the base bid amount of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five
I move to award two thousand nineteen water main project to San, Stante Excavating in the base bid amount of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. This five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents mounts to be expensed to water fund account number five nine one dash five three eight dash nine seven two dot zero zero zero. Water line extensions.
Move.
Second.
Second. I just have a question on that. I don't know if the township board and the people in the general public know how much time you put in this, Jack. The water sewer committee meets ungodly amount of time because there's a lot of things on the table. Myself and Curtis, I'm the same committee with him, but we're here. Jack's retired. And he asked the committee, you know, you know, you need to get a small stipend for coming in, but it's still a lot of time out of your day and life. And I just for one, I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Okay, I, just to keep it simple.
Okay.
Um, I think I know the answer to this, but it sounds like we're bringing that water main down for the subdivision.
Yes. But we're bringing.
And we're pay, and we're bearing the cost of it.
Not all of it.
Okay.
We've, we've agreed to collect prepaid cap fees from the developer for the forty-nine homes that are going in there.
Okay.
At six thousand, seventy-five dollars apiece. So that's roughly three hundred and some thousand dollars, which water, water cap fees are used to build our lines. In 2020, us doing that with this subdivision in conjunction, the 2020 M twenty-four project will include a water main that's going to go under M twenty-four and connect to the sixteen inch main, causing a critical.
I was going to say, this is to loop it, right?
It builds the integrity of our system.
I guess I think we just need to let people.
Yeah.
Know this.
Tullamore just contributed, they're going to contribute around seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars for this cost.
Okay.
Do you have to do it in this factory?
Yeah, I just think it's important that people don't think we're just doing this for development.
Like Bill said, you don't see the minutia, but you're getting the sausage.
Right, right. Well, people need to know.
We're not, we're not hiding anything, but we're diligently working with these people day and night to.
Well, I know you are.
Build the integrity of our system.
I know you are.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Dar?
Yes.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, oh, I, and I knew that. I knew a lot of these pieces, I just felt like it wasn't clear to the general public.
Right, so I said my comments, unless you're involved in it, it's hard for the layperson to understand all the parts.
Right.
Uh, let's move to the next one, the communications grant, the manager. I'm the one who put this on the agenda, I think the township needs to go in this direction. There's a lot of money out there, it's impossible to stay on top of it, if you're elected official, supposedly recognized full-time here at township. I included, it's not only a grant writer, this person would be, they, I have a job description in here. I wanted to go through a couple of things, pursue public and nonprofit to grant opportunities, assist the township supervisor, composing, editing, distributing, distributing written materials in the after the township, assist the township fifth advisor and economic development subcommittee, composing, editing, distributing, press releases, economic development and information purposes, assess the force department, providing documents, information, data, and writers, and presses me for, if I create an information app, draft the support requests regarding the entities, assist the force department for maintenance of the township website, Facebook, touch the dot partnerships with entities, help public and private, it's important that deep communication, especially with this app, two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four project. Attend the annual townships and missions MTA, assist the fire department, composing, editing, distributing, writers, publication, helps the township maintain good relationships with the public, and the end of acting citizens to help document the concern, determine the needs. And the one, direct about township, supervisor, manager, attends committee and government meetings, including, not limited to the actual, long-term development, for, January farmers, the council, and the Oxford Board of Education, up among, Addison Youth, that has some youth assistance activities, programs and events, I'm not going to bore you on that. This person will do a lot more than just write grants. Jack, anything else, sir?
Yeah, I, I was looking at a lot of the stuff and a lot of the stuff I do. And it's, it's, it's very time consuming. And I can go through Oxford Chamber of Commerce, I go to most of the ribbon cuttings, I go to most of their meetings, I present at their meetings. The Oxford Village Council, not so much, but we still go there. The Board of Education, I'm a member of the O, OTE committee, which develops technical education at the schools. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Subcommittee. I can back through this whole list and say, boy, I got to apply for my own job here. Tens Annual Conference for MTA and all these things. It's a critical point right now, and, and Joe brought it up, and, and this is where I got on board with this position was, we're missing a lot of activity on social media, we're missing a lot of communications. Today's people are not focused on calling the road commission for a bump in the road. They, they call, they get on Facebook and they complain and they talk about what's missing. We found out about this grant, what, two days ago, Joe? Two hundred million dollars. But we, no one came to us from the rural area and said, hey, we, we got a grant that's out there you might be able to get. But if you monitor Facebook, somebody might say something. It's the new era of communications. And I don't think we do a very good job of communicating with our constituents, with the public, with our businesses, with our developers. And part of this grant writing, I, I strongly suggest that we move forward with is the communications end of this business. Not only putting it out, but listening to it. You know, there's got to be a voice in, in our office that says, you know, we're going to FO you this, and we got to have this, and we got to have it by this date. That person can get all the details down and, and get it done. But a grant writer, I, I, there's got to be some hot buttons you can set up on your computer. I know they do it. And, and we'll find grants out there. If you look at where some of these are that Chris came from, you know, I know we know about them, but the thing is, we'll have somebody that stands there and does it. I don't care if we get rejected. I'm, I'll, I'll award you a credit if you apply for five and get one. If, it's, to me, it's, we're not doing that. I even looked in one of the notes in, in one of our packet here and it said, I asked how we're doing with grants. And it just said, no, we haven't done any. And that was from a year ago. And I, and I go, yep, see, there it is again, it's hit me again. So I got on board with this right away and, and, and I thought, you know, this is great. I might be able to be retired.
Do you have a question, Doug?
Well, actually, I do. I've thought about this for, actually, the last couple of years, that we need somebody, you know, committed with the proper credentials, that that individual, if they do everything that's on this resume, even a portion of it, they will well earn their salary. One, a couple of things that Mr. Burnett brought up, and one thing hit me was, he said somebody committed. And that's the key to it. You got to have the same enthusiasm, the same guide, guideline or road to travel is what this township is looking for. You almost need a super person, because I read the resume from top to bottom, there's a lot there. You need a very intelligent person in order to get it organized. I do believe that a grant would, would be a good part of it. And I think that as they develop the grants for this township, which by the way, will be beneficial to the residents of this township in a large degree. And every grant, I think, will provide other opportunities and leads. Right now, as Jack pointed out, there just isn't the time or the ability to do all this. Not that you wouldn't like to do it, you just can't do it, you're, you're human. If you had a dedicated individual with, as I say, the right credentials, and I do believe that's the approach that we need to take, then I would choose this person.
Doug, do you have anything?
No.
Yeah, I think, for me personally, I, I need more research before I would approve this. And I'm not disagreeing that a grant writer would be great, I just think that when we look at the job description, I would, I would analyze the internal existing employees to see what, what items on here can actually be performed in the office before we need to put them into a job description. But, you know, a grant writer, yes, I, I do see the, the need for that. But there again, there, there is other duties in the, in the office that can fulfill some of these, these requirements.
I just, so, ideas, listen, final job description. I just put down some ideas that the board would want to take a look at, where is it?
Yeah, because if, if you do decide to move forward, you're going to have to have a, you know, a salary base, you're going to have to decide how you're going to advertise for this. You know, you're looking at somebody that has qualifications of at least a bachelor's degree. And I know, for me, when I fulfilled Kelly's job, it was very difficult, those requirements, but it doesn't say you have to have, you just, you'd have the credentials on there. So, is, is it something that would be great for Oxford? Absolutely. My one question I would have for Mr. Barnett is, they, they awarded a lot of grant money for the local match, I wonder if he's pulling that from his general fund or from his fund balance to match that. So that's something we have to consider too, out of our budget, because we're, we're now analyzing between the general fund expenditures, expenditures such as the immersed contributions versus, versus putting money for local match, so. That's, that's some, some of my thoughts going forward, but I, I think it needs a little, little more thought than, than what it is, but cannot work absolutely.
And, yeah, Joe?
I agree, a lot of what Curtis said, a lot of these grants that Chris has been bragging about, we've already gotten all the years. Plenty assistance grant, just, I did, we just finished ours, I just turned the final paper. M dot Ironbell, you get granted township to participate, we got the grant tomorrow. Cap grant, the board goes through condemnation, I got it tomorrow. Still can't chase some of these grants if the political will's not there to do to get the grants. You condemn a piece of property, that grant's with us tomorrow. That guarantees from two different sources. But to me, this is stuff that can be, all be done internally, in-house. I mean, I would, to me, if we've got an extra ninety, hundred thousand to throw at a new position, I'd rather pay down my fire debt. A liability that's sitting out there. And I'm great that Ori does this, and I think it's great, but to me, I want to be like Oxford, I want to be like Ori, I want to do what we want to do. Ori does great, I'm happy the way they do things. I want us to bear our own individual community, not model what we want to after Ori. And I just don't think this is a needed position.
Can I, Marjorie, do that?
No, I, I'm, I think, this seems like a good idea, it seems like something we should look at pursuing. I'd want a little more information, I, the job description was very rough draft.
That's exactly what we want.
Okay. So, a little more refined job description. But I, it does seem like a, like something that we could benefit from, I think that there's more out there. And having a professional do it, it would be a better choice than having someone that is, whose position is meant to do another specific job. And, oh, by the way, way, break grants in your, in your spare time. I know that the women in this, in the office, the township office work very hard. They're busy all the time, that I see, anytime I'm in here, and that, I just don't see that that could be handled by them.
Jack?
Well, I'll make a motion to create and staff a position to procure grants and to respond to requests for information, respond to social media inquiries for the township and requests made under the Freedom of Information Act. Also, perform other duties as directed by the township supervisor. And in conjunction with the job description presented or amended, the initial annual salary for this position, depending on the experience of the applicant, would not, would be not to exceed that of a deputy supervisor, together with the benefits afforded a full-time regular township employee. The township supervisor, whose duties under MCL four two point one zero N, include, assume all duties and responsibilities as personnel director of the township, employees is accordingly authorized to interview and review applications for this position and to recommend to this board for consideration a person to be hired for the position of communication grants manager as named at this time, with a title to be assigned at time of hire. End of motion.
I'll support.
Move in support.
With a condition. Condition being that they detail the job description.
I included that in the motion that said, the position, that, where is it? I wrote it, I know I changed it.
I believe that the position is needed, but I also believe that it needs to be maybe streamlined a bit.
I said the job description presented and/or amended or changed.
I think it's too early for that.
I, I, that's my point.
Yeah, I, I think we need to see a clean copy of the job description and discuss the wage before we move forward with hiring the position.
That's what I would like to see, too.
That, that way I would approve it with that condition.
Would this person be like a deputy supervisor, representing you at the meetings?
No. That was, that was Ori, we don't want to be like that.
But I don't know, you were, want to structure, I thought you could be a cable. Would that person go? Would the deputy go?
He probably become an associate.
Also, you have two deputies, I missed first and that first.
He's not deputy, Joe, he's a, he's a medication manager, has nothing to do with township. It's on another note.
Wait, Chris had a structure, that was like two deputies.
But each township structures everything that each of the positions does differently. In, in other townships, you know, the deputy supervisor is not a building administrator and zoning administrator. You know, it's just, every township has, every position is, is handled a little bit differently. Chris said that his zoning administrator is not, or that his grant writer is not his deputy, he also has a deputy. So, we would just handle it different, we would handle it the Oxford way, I believe.
Right.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because they'd have to take an oath if they're going to be deputy supervisor, and I'm not sure you can have two deputy supervisors.
No, but nobody's talking, but I don't think anybody wants it to be deputy.
Uh, trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
No.
Trustee Dar?
No.
And trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, we have four no's and three yeses, the motion fails.
Okay, I would like to see this come back with this cleaned up and a wage in there before I vote yes.
Well, I wouldn't put a wage in there, I'd put a not to exceed the deputy's wage, because what you're going to do is, what if you get?
Wage scale or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
By the way, this is not a new concept. There are more townships that are doing this, and they're being successful at it. So we need to look at those as well.
There's a lot of money out there.
Yes.
But I do agree that if we go this route, it's got to be tightened up.
What do you mean?
Like what, what you're saying, have a little bit more details of what we expect him or her to do.
Yes. And I, as far as the, the other stuff that you said can be handled in-house, I think this is more a matter of this person will do the communications and the grants, and where needed, fill in with these other positions. Don't forget that final sentence in the job description.
Oh, others.
And other duties as assigned.
That's why I said not. Okay, we're going to move on. Uh, move charter, what, the phone is? Charter Communications. Charter Communications.
Your contribution?
This is the first and last time you ever could see her sleeping.
I wasn't sleeping, I didn't know you wanted me. I thought you were going to discuss it first. Terry Stiles from OCTV, production manager. Hi. Hi.
Uh, do you want to explain, uh, further explain?
Oh, okay, sure. I thought Curtis was going to do that, okay, I can do that. So, every township who does business with charter slash spectrum communications provider is required to renew their contract by August. The four communities that we belong to in the inter-local agreement, which would be Leonard, the village of Leonard, the village of Oxford, Oxford Township and Addison Township. Fourteen years ago, when this contract was initially signed, for some reason, we don't know why, two percent peg fees were not included in this contract, although they could have been. Peg fees go directly to OCTV for capital expenditures. The jury's still out on exactly what that means, but we have been functioning solely on franchise fees, which is five percent of the total revenue of Charter slash Spectrum. The full five percent has been given to us consistently from the township of Oxford. We get half percent, or two point five, from the Village of Oxford, the Village of Leonard, and Addison Township. In January, Governor Snyder signed a bill that could essentially take our franchise fees away from us, as an in-kind service for us to be able to use the airwaves, Charter's airwaves, and AT&amp;T for that matter, but we're speaking specifically of Charter. So, we are asking you to include in the contract the two percent peg fee, and throw it against the wall and see what sticks. I spoke with Karen Coronado last June, and asked her, can we just include that now within the contract? It can be included any time in the contract, if Charter agrees to it. I also spoke with the state of Michigan, they were willing to go to bat for us and do some negotiations with Charter to get that two percent in. In the meantime, that bill was signed, so our attorney advised us to wait to see what happens with the new contract. So, we're asking each community to write that two percent in. They require a list of criteria that we meet at the station, number one, to make them consider allowing us to collect those two percent peg fees. I've included that with the township packet, I don't know if you have it, but we meet three pages of criteria, and I'm asking that that be included with that contract, to prove to Charter that we're doing our job. In addition, they give communities two stations, one for a government station, and then one for educational and public. We have not used the second station, channel, for years, because there's requirements, you have to have eight hours of programming, twenty-four hours a day, and in our previous management, we did not meet that requirement, we certainly do now. So, that's one of the things that we can bargain with Charter. They've been using that as a revenue air, a channel, for years, for fourteen years, not to mention they haven't had to pay us peg fees. So, we're just asking to try to get those peg fees, because if we do lose those franchise fees, which we won't know till the end of this month, because that's when our first check comes, after that law was signed, we'll need that peg fee to survive.
Is this just information or is it a motion?
I just gave you information, so that you can make your motion. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, pardon me?
To sign this document?
Yes, yes, each supervisor needs, of each community, needs to sign the document.
Do you ask them to two and a half, two percent?
Two percent. Yep.
No.
And, let me add that, there is some Comcast, add to that, there are some Comcast residents in this community, and Comcast has already stated, they will add an addendum to their contract with two percent peg fees if Charter doesn't.
You know, if this is the existing contract, that's a 2004 contract, there's no provision that I saw in there for to put two percent of peg fees in.
They sent out a new contract, you should have the new contract.
Yeah.
I have a copy of it, I've written all over it, but I have a copy of it.
Do you have it here?
Uh-huh, yeah, I have it.
When I get it in Friday, it did not have any connection to package, as far as the contract.
On this uniform. Could we do this in August?
No, it's too late. It has to be done now. I've been kind of pushing everybody since, at least, May. It's a universal contract now. Every single solitary community has the same contract, and AT&amp;T and Charter both have the same contract.
When will this be effective?
The end of August.
Be the two percent peg fee?
I'm hoping so, yes.
What date would you want us to make our motion effective?
Today.
Because it's going to be due before next year.
We need to get that back to them ASAP, I don't want to miss the deadline, we have an option, each community has an option, they won't communicate with me anymore. Once I let her know that I knew that we could ask for that two percent, she stopped communicating with me. However, each community needs to make a motion to put that two percent in.
I'll make a motion as Supervisor William Dunn signed the collection of the two percent peg fees as an addendum to the Charter Communications Contract.
Support?
Move and support.
As far as I know, because we don't have this in the packet to really act on, but up on the screen is a cable television franchise agreement between the four communities that was dated in 2004, so is this?
That's our, that's to be the coalition, that contract is for the coalition, the inter-local coalition. We're talking about the contract between Charter, which is a brand-new one.
Okay, now, is this CCVIII Operating LLC, that's who it's between, right over here at the top?
Let me read that.
CC8 Operating.
NCC8 Operating, what's it say underneath that?
Cable television.
It's the next line.
Franchise agreements dated August 31st, 2004.
So, this is the inter-local agreement, I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking?
This is not the agreement.
That's not the Charter contract.
Addison.
It has nothing to do with the inter-local agreement.
When does this one expire?
I'd have to look.
Okay, so I have to?
Sorry, I would have to look at the, I'd have to read the inter-local contract again, but that's just between the townships and the villages, to create our commission, and to agree to have a television station in Oxford. What I'm talking about is the contract with your provider for cable services.
Bill, you have a question down here?
Bill, if, if what Terry is seeking tonight is your signing the contract, why don't we just have Terry provide us a clean contract for you to sign tomorrow? What it is, is requesting the two percent peg fees be allocated to OCTV, is that correct?
To include the two percent, there is a space in that contract to write it in, it was left empty fourteen years ago.
Okay, so if she gets you that tomorrow, if this vote passes, you have the authority to sign it.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yep.
That's what I'm asking.
And as part of that motion, you want us to include this?
The criteria.
You want this document to be included as an addendum to the?
Yes.
Actually, doesn't the cable, cable commission do this?
They have to do all that.
They won't do it.
What do you mean?
I'll give them a signed copy, they'll send it where it has to be.
No, each community has to send it and deal with the provider themselves, they won't deal with the cable commission. Remember when we tried to get Mike Watzas to represent the inter-local commission? We couldn't get an agreement with the village for Mike Watzas to represent us, that's another reason why it died. Each community has to represent themselves, because they're providing to your community.
I want to do more to.
Great, yep, okay. Well done. And that's to include those justifications, as an addendum to that contract. Or, I don't, I don't know if they want that to be an addendum or not, it's just to let them know that we have more than qualified.
Information.
Thank you. I think Curtis has the original, I thought you had the original contract.
I may have it, I don't recall seeing it from Charter slash Spectrum, I have from contract.
Okay, somebody has it, we'll find it.
Call the roll.
If not, we have, we can call Karen Coronado, and she can send it, remember, she told you, she sent you one, Bill? Remember, we were going to try to meet with her, and she said, I sent you the contract?
I would still like to meet with Charter from now.
I would too, I'd be more than happy to meet with her.
We're doing this tomorrow, we'll call the representative.
Okay, yay. And there's a, Marjorie, I can't recall her last name, it's on the very last page of that contract, she's a government liaison from ASA, Detroit? We also should probably contact, contact her, I guess she's the one that's putting her foot down, saying no, according to Pauline Bennett. I will leave that with you, that contract, the mess that I made out of it.
We'll work on this, ma'am.
Okay. Hold on.
It's Maryland Passmore.
Yeah.
Government Affairs.
Yep.
Ada, Michigan.
Never been there. Yeah.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you again for the support that we get from this board.
Thank you.
That's it.
Couple of items, Bill, last time you and I talked in one of these meetings, you said you were going to schedule or talk to the people on the planning commission, set up a meeting that we could discuss our issues on the zoning. Okay, we had that meeting, it was on 6/13, June 13, and Tom Berger kind of championed the meeting, and, long story short, we didn't, we never got to any of our issues that we had sent to the township from our council back in February. We talked about the sixteen items that Jack had talked about, but we never got to the hard issues. So, I'm wondering if we're ever going to do it, if we're not, I guess you got to tell us, and we're going to move forward. The other thing is, we're wondering, if you will, is there going to be an extension to the water district, as we have heard, for more development, in opposition to the master plan? We understand that you, and I believe Curtis, signed for more water for Levy, to expand.
I'm not going to comment, because this is public comment.
I'll get it, Mike.
Okay.
Jack says he'll get it.
Okay, all right, so, I'm just going back to these issues with the zoning, doesn't look like we're going to get anywhere with that. Tom was very good with us, he said he would discuss it with the rest of the committee, about, we've never heard back anything, there was nothing here tonight on that, was an abbreviation of the sixty-seven eight, da-da-da-da-da. So, we're going to move forward, believe me. Thank you.
Board comments, starting with Audrey.
I guess, you know, I appreciate from an auditing standpoint, financial end of it, the information that was put together by the accountant, CPA firm, very well done. Lets us know exactly where we sit financially, and I think it's good for the township, all the residents here. Appreciate it.
Ready?
Nothing.
The only thing that I'll say is, there's a no has July 20th, Treasurer Ferrari? Yeah, so maybe I stole your thunder, the smaller company.
The issue that Mr. used part of about the planning commission not addressing, I was wondering if they ran out of time, or they just didn't?
It wasn't the planning commission, it was the ordinance review subcommittee.
Oh, good, I'm going to have Jack try to address that as to what happened.
Well, it's really nice that our audit turned out so well, and I would just like to remind everyone that maybe next month, we can discuss our annual contribution to the pension fund.
You know, spending spree?
I would like to see that on the agenda, please.
Those contributions?
Spending spree?
Yes.
We have a fund balance, and each year, we try to fix something to dominate for the Sears Center, the Rock Project, the Water.
Bill, I would like to see safety nets.
Oh, yeah.
He's such a walker.
Yeah, I do. First, thanks for the accolades, I know we all work hard, Jim, we ride him pretty tough, he owes us donuts again, but that's okay. The water main activities through 2020, after the completion of the first stage of the loop out Lakeville Road to the trailer park, now this one that we just approved to Drainer Road, this is all done to loop our system. These loopings were supposed to be done in 1997, and to save on the bonds, they weren't done, but the integrity of the system calls for it. So, in 2020, we'll end up connecting from the west side of M24 to the east side of Drainer, where this water main quits. In addressing the Levy properties, the Levy property here on Dunlap is, has been included in the water and sewer district.
Portion of?
Part of it already was, and the portion that wasn't is now included, because what they've done is presented a concept, if you will, and what they want to do, and how many homes it was less than, what was already in the existing water district. The other Levy property is the fifty acres on the corner of Ray Road and M24, that's it, that's as far north as it goes, but that services the commercial, zone commercial properties on M24. Nothing east of that, and nothing north of that, has been included in the water and sewer district, just the fifty acres north of Ray Road, east of M24.
But that would be commercial?
That's, that's commercial property, zone commercial.
I'm stepping to time.
Pardon me?
Can't talk to him.
Talk later. But, it's not the entire Levy properties, I saw Facebook light up, I mean, it's, it's people out there leading the false prophecies in this township don't know what they're talking about, because they're not at these meetings when they're being held, and they're not in, in part of the minutia. So, when it gets out there, it stirs up the public. All we did was put fifty acres of commercial land to, to the water district, water and sewer district. Eventually, the Brabduy subdivision on the west side of M24 is probably going to require sewer and water, because those homes were built in the twenties, thirties, forties, and the septics are at, at least, just barely usable. So, you know, to protect all the watershed, we have to concern ourselves with that future growth, future remediation of that, not alone growth. Nothing has been addressed to the rest of the Levy property. The other thing I want to say was Tough Mudder was a success, Pete, you got paid?
We got one more coming.
One more coming, okay, I know Scott's got his, Mike Solwall got his, everybody got their money for supporting the activity above and beyond what it cost our sheriff's department and our police department, fire department, to do their job. Cost us nothing as township residents to have this event, but yet, we get, they get the bill for their services. Other than that, that's it.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Vote for the chairman.
Oh, I'm not going to know.
Oh, I thought it, this.
You did?
Aye.
All in favor, signify.
Aye.
He had six words.